Okay, yes.
Yeah, see, I always do it.
But we thought that much, that all is not moving in turn.
Some of the little payers we're going to do, we will have gotten some.
Guys, we got you.
That's right.
Right, and maybe the other thing is that we want to prioritize these buildings for what's more important, we need to get by the way, there are some of them, the other.
Yeah, we want to go.
I know one of them all, we're going to say, no one to run out of again, there can be some good call hidden damage, so once we get into one building, it may end up costing more than what we participate, you know, so we need to make sure we get the most important building first. Because then when we, the ethics council has some faults, right? Um, put this.
Yeah, that's right.
It basically is false. Because we don't know if this is going to be the foul amount of money that we need to make, or need more money than for one thousand.
Right, so what we can say is we can approve the work on all the buildings, but we can go about our work systematically, that way we start running over. Yeah, we could approve, we can.
But my question, yeah, my question is, we're going to choose what building to move over first?
That's all.
I think that's up to the executive, right? Right, well, I agree with it, that's why, that's why we're not, we need to have a party, I agree, the legislature, I see what building they've done, right? All right, I'm good with that, I'm good with that.
But now, see, this is what I'm saying, we don't, we have these other building, we invite every day to the branch out here to discuss this here, and no one shows up, so when we put some on the floor, everybody wants to have an input, that's why we have this meeting, to make a decision on where we're going to move forward. So, Mr. President, I've been saying, just know how you said room, how we're going to go, and then, you know, I already had requested that we, we visit all the city property, we have never visited the city property, city conditions, and how, of course, we can be done, what we're going to do.
Okay, but I'm just a little bit, that's it. Ms. Scott, one time I said that people need to be here, and in regardless situation, every council ever watched any of these people, whether they ever meet or not, and you do it every night, every council, you watch your people. So, I want to watch my people, I'm in the meeting tonight, I'm going to watch my people, is that right? Okay, okay, clear, all right, council.
Absolutely.
And you said, council, the motion was made, and it died with the lack of the sense, and so therefore, Councilwoman Thomas, Councilman Morgan.
And I, and him.
And the, the council, the members of the committee are going to get together, draft something, and bring back to us the appropriate motion, because right now we're not quite ready to vote, and so we will bring it back, and we look forward to y'all bringing it back as soon as possible.
And, and if we're not on the speed, you know, I have to say what I will say. Yes, I mean.
Oh, let's have a word, please.
Security, security.
Let's have a word, go ahead.
The purpose of our campaign is to meet a meeting, is move things forward, now, we take our time to come out, to see the interest we think that we need to move forward, I don't need to go back and do the slave over again and come back to, uh, the vote, to make, make a decision on, 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 on the move forward on the city property that we need to take care of. Now, I heard today some word of it, and I respect you, but we have to wait another two more weeks, I mean, it's two more weeks before we come out with a draft of showing, which is already in our review, it came from, we got a list, we came, we came to.
Okay, well, again, you made the motion that died with the lack of the sense, and so that's where we are proceeding on this, and I understand your issue is what you're saying, but we need to move on, because then it'd get a second, and we said that the way we would proceed is to all get together, ready that, so I think that was the understanding, so I ask that we move on to our next issue, because we, it's been a long evening, we have more things we need to discuss, all right? Thank you, very, thank you very, all right, now, are the annual committees that being reported this time, annual committees being reported, all right, here, no further committees, uh, is there new, any unfinished or new business that we need to take up at this time?
Yes.
All right, let's go start with Councilwoman Thomas, and then we'll get to Councilwoman Carter.
My new business, uh, I have a issue, it's, it's a, it's a bad problem to deal with it, uh, hopefully, the, the, uh, constituents in here tonight, three months now, I've been doing, uh, fast working some on, uh, not being able to wash, I probably just before, in the next day, five, we have to, if you buy it out there, okay? Uh, I'm going, I'm waiting, this week is supposed to be, say they're going to start, and I know this, this family is very impatient, they are waiting, uh, three months to get their house in land, for being able to wash clothes, and being able to, uh, have sewage running, we, we're not, we're, they're not responsible for their, their operations, and, uh, this family, uh, I want to let them know that this late, late part of this interview, and if I drop, we should get our city to be free, sewage line, for being able to operate and function in their home, so, this is the new business I'm bringing, because it's been three months, and after that, I was coming asking for it, but it didn't get someone to come and give us a product, for us to take care of those people, uh, in the old neighborhood.
Chair, this is more to you bringing your appropriate motion, folks, attack.
Thank you.
Uh, anything else, new business, Councilwoman Thomas?
No.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Carter.
Oh, for the last, the contract of the Red Apple Party, uh, that we brought over, sorry, on the video, I don't know, I mean, the, the, the issue with that contract.
Uh, Councilwoman Thomas, I believe raised that question, and I've talked with, a- and, and by the way, I think the issue being brought was two or three fold, maybe, maybe, what I looked at was any ethical concern, any financial concern, uh, and I've talked with the, one of the board members, I've talked with, uh, the individual who's representing the SRA and that, uh, leadership capacity. What happened, I want to say, last year, I forget the exact month, was that an inquiry was made with the Ethics Commission about that person holding a position, that position was being sought at one point, it seemed while the person was a council member, I said I thought that was a bad idea, the person waited, did not attempt to assume the position while on the council, the, the, the SRA then later on asked to, to retain or, or hire that person in a capacity that I don't believe is a conflict unless she's lobbying the city for money, that's what I think it was down to, that was also the question of an account breakdown of funds that were being asked of by the city, and what those funds were being used to pay, uh, I have, I got something in, right in a text message about the fact that any reimbursement to that person was being, any reimbursement of salary was not being requested anymore, anymore, so it appears that that may have been a request at one point, the question was whether or not expenses, uh, related to, to working on the, the committee were also being requested for reimbursement, I think they may be, I don't have a hundred percent clear picture of that yet, but the city should not pay anyone lobbying fees, no one should lobby the city, uh, there's a two-year, two-year window, which require, which requires that anyone who was an elected public official not work in that capacity involving the city and the payment of funds. So, the question now is what's exactly being done, what money's been asked for, and where is it going, I have some of that, but not all of that, and before I give you a complete report, I want to get everything else that I would, I think, leads to an answer to the, to Councilwoman Thomas's question.
That was the question, the question was that I asked you about, uh, I think, um, I got to research a weapon from, uh, this one Maxwell, question was that we paid, uh, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars, uh, for the downtown, and the other fifteen thousand, you paid to the director, uh, question was, where were the other ten thousand dollars used, and, uh, it was broken down to, and told me how they would be using that money for other things to be, to get in that over, so I was, I was pleased with what you broke it down and explained to me and showed me how, uh, how will be used, and what will Mrs. Youngler, uh, be, uh, be giving back to the city, reporting back to the city, so, uh, giving us a report on, on how the things that they're activities, uh, do to be better, and, uh, that's what I got me, I wanted to know more, so they did tell me, so I got.
And I got the same information too, Councilwoman, that's what, that's what I was referring to about a breakdown, but I hadn't gotten all the information I was seeking in addition to that, so I didn't put anything in writing, I have an email from Wanda Maxwell, a text message from Wanda Maxwell explaining some of the same information.
So, so, uh, you are looking forward with this to give us a.
I'll give you, I'll give you a written report of what I found, is what I'm saying, a written report, I didn't have all the information I was looking for, except in talking with Ms. Maxwell, I got the same information Councilwoman Thomas got, that's what I was saying earlier, I've talked with, uh, with at least three people about this now.
So, you don't have a whole list of this, or?
I don't have any questions about the breakdown that Councilwoman Thomas asked about. The contract, right, right, but I had, but I had some questions I'm asking too, before I put anything in writing to you or gave you an official report, that's all I'm saying. Sure, that's what I just said.
Okay, so here's Councilwoman, all right, Councilwoman, uh, this is that.
All right, mine is this, it would be, uh, I think, I will keep, I lost it, I'm getting without keep paper, and also, uh, really, I want to set up a negative, uh, committee, you know, safety, because we've been having issues going on that really, really dangerous, uh, one of my, uh, neighborhoods, and I want Miller to come out and do some things, uh, for the next two weeks, I'll be reaching out, we can't, because we are desperately needing the help, because we have, I've had, uh, fifteen, twelve phone calls on one house in one neighborhood, so, really, uh, doing some work on there in the next two weeks, and also, uh, don't look like I'm a baby, get around. really, uh, doing some work on there in the next two weeks, and also, uh, don't look like I'm going to be able to get around COVID. So I'm going to go ahead, um, you know, set up a meeting with Bill, with Gotham, to, uh, anybody else who want to come down, probably, um, maybe second week of February, and get some guidelines on getting the resources out, but we need to get some building put down and do some things that I, I have a pool of calls. So I'm, we'll be working on it, I'm just trying to get these stuff that the French I had, uh, she did away, ran that program well, along with the new ideas I have. So I will be getting in touch with you all very soon.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Councilwoman Thomas?
Yeah, I have, I need a, uh, I, I have a new, uh, new business. I want to, uh, bring back the, I'm requesting for the revolution that was done back with, um, uh, Councilperson, you can see that was, that gave a lot of funds to Warhate, the own project. And I would like to see, uh, pull the, uh, pull the documents up, because I will come back. I've heard full of, I'm going to get a meeting.
And that part, you should get the request.
Yes, sir, I am. Uh, you're saying you want the resolution if there was one?
I want to, I want to, whatever was rolled up during the time, for, um, Councilperson, that received, in the request of, uh, uh, funds that he done in the project, uh, this is going into the fifth year of six years, before six years, and I want to see what that, uh, can I would keep.
Okay, which project was that, Councilwoman?
Well, uh, the funds are given to, uh, what, 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 uh, who, who else puts their own file on that, in the first hand. I want to see what the language has in here in, uh, timing, uh, project. Uh, see, go on, see.
Okay, and, 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 and why here, um, my place, go look at the finance also, you know, the, the mine, it was a breakdown of the mine. Like I said, and also, uh, I'd like to offer you to give a conversation with a clear level of we had, uh, you know, we got to give it out there first.
And, and I say so much to.
Yes, sir.
Of Dr. Higgins, if you're not coming to Warhate, kind of second term, uh, representative in Warhate seven, they can't come in and jump in on a contract and start something in Warhate seven, because if they do, they going to hear from me, you, uh.
Okay, we, we've got the request that we're basically, clerk, clerk, change those requests, and the day to her, it's been done on open forum, and that's appropriate, and we appreciate that. Any conversations, uh, Council Johnson, that you involved, I think, also involves the mayor as well.
Oh, no, no.
So they both involved, they got the purchases, but I need to get put in law. So she really bought up, but you were rich, and we would take you up, but trust me. Okay, all right, so, any other new business, any other new business?
I just wanted to remind, um, the clerk to do the research on the clerk and me.
Sure.
Thank you. All right, any other business?
Old, old bill.
Yes, yes.
Uh, I like, you know, we'll be getting, we went up to meeting, having this war instead of a pay plan for the employees, uh, face deal, uh, for the employee, I like to give you that. Uh, we pushing real hard for one day.
Is anyone able to answer that right now? Yeah, I think, I think it's a budget fee, we talked about it, Council Johnson. And, uh, hit professional member, Councilman.
Basically, what the, uh, financial department sent us last week was the effects, uh, well, I don't even know if we got it.
I have the issue.
Well, have Auburn started sent us, uh, a face deal?
No, yeah, Auburn has sent us a face deal.
Well, we haven't seen, I haven't seen one. Okay, but I haven't seen, I'm just saying, okay, I need to go, but I haven't been getting my emails. Okay, man, I have to. Will you go back and check if you have any difficulty putting this place? I don't know. All right. But what I'm saying is, probably we have to, and do it, probably. Yeah, it's a budget finance, the mayor's working with us. They have very detailed, especially. Yeah, I know what he been talking about. Yeah. We, we could talk it, we went on to the board, like a fact, we're moving, we're moving. All right, anything else, counsel, anything else, any other, oh, I'm sorry, no further business. Here is no further business of the council, they didn't want to do it, yes, Councilwoman Thomas.
Where are you going to do, you know, the, the, the project, because you're holding this out, what is the purpose, what's going on?
I don't have a problem with it, I don't know what else.
Where are we going to do that?
I think the mayor has completed his conversations with us, and so as soon as he's gone five feet, and he's completed this far, then I would go to the council. But right now, that hasn't been talked to yet, so. So we are with this?
All right. We asked a question, we're official, and he said that he will still working on that all the time, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Thomas, I appreciate it.
I just want to know, we done, we done did it to profit, and we just want to know.
Yes, well, we talked about it in work session as well, and thank you for reminding me, uh, that is. All right, there being no further business of the council, this may be me staying in such a.